Recovered some of the...
Dan Eversen is not coming.
Okay.
He's going, he has to bring his wife to Green Bay.
Oh geez. So we're missing Dan and Pete.
Dan and Pete.
Are you recording?
We are.
So it's 2:05 PM. We are a little delayed today, it's Monday, July 9, 2019. This is a market township board work session. We were visiting, Randy and I, with Sarah Cambenzi just a few minutes ago, trying to fill her in on the more recent discussion of Myers going to tax tribunal. So we're gonna shift gears and we are missing Dan and Pete. Pete's on the line, so he can hear us and participate. And we have no public. So today we're gonna talk about budget definitions and future recruitment. And I guess we can follow in, in that order, if you wanna shift over paperwork. Budget definitions, Lois sent an email last week and said, "What do you need from me?" Which is great, and I said, "Tell me what terms you use, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel on her end." And I thought that was extremely helpful. I got tribe all stuff mixed in here. Too many papers. So we've got, you sent that to everybody too, didn't you? I don't know where you wanna start. There's the budget definition part, assets, liabilities.
Well, I think, first of all, we're obligated to follow the uniform chart accounts.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, I guess that's what, and that's what Lois had sent out, basically, is what those are under those two that we have to follow.
But like you said, Randy, this morning, the Kirk's stuff, that his is handled a little differently, because it's a different type of accounting. So maybe we need to try to get his terminology a little more in line with Lois's, which you probably wouldn't mind. Some of them are just a little bit different. Make it easier.
Well, actually, the terminology that I use is, comes from Lois.
Yeah.
How's that? Yeah, assets and liabilities.
Yeah, I don't make this stuff up.
So I think, Dave, you were more concerned about the fund balances, what's assigned and unassigned. Committed funds, we kind of know what those are, but...
Well, I guess my concern was, is we've got the fund balances out there that are unassigned, which are rather substantial, depending on whose side of the house you're looking at. But my biggest concern was, is to identify, instead of having that setting in one large pool, you can just dip into whatever you need, not suggest anybody's going in there and doing anything they're not supposed to do.
Right.
But to identify funds that are set aside or committed for operational reserves and emergencies and clearly define each one of those, so that we know who can go in there and take money out without board action and what requires board action. And it might be better, you know, when you start looking at it, to combine the operational reserve and the emergency reserve, depending on what definition you put on it. Now, when I read the stuff that I got from Randy the other day, it's, other than categorizing them as committed or unrestricted or whatever, one of those five categories you wanna put on it, it's still up to the board to define what committed means and what unrestricted means. And then it's up to the board to also define what operational reserve is, if you choose to use it. I don't care if you call it Fund One. It's up to you to decide what you want to use it for and what category of fund it is. Either committed or restricted or unrestricted or whatever it is. And that's all I ever started out wanting. I mean, I think we're getting way carried away with this. We just need to get some categories established, so that there's a certain amount of funding for me. We don't have a clear understanding of contingency versus emergency versus miscellaneous versus reserve. And we're never really sure what, when we're talking about in the budget session, what falls into that category, because there's not a clear written definition of it, so that you can go back and refer to it and, "This $2 is in a reserve fund and that's what it can be used for." Period. And I think that's where we start, the wheels start to fall off, when we get a budget session, because nobody really knows what we're talking about.
Well, and the CIP fell into that pretty easily, too, because that was our, one of our oldest discussions about having something in his funds, or any of them, but particularly Kirk's, that if you're gonna have a project and you're putting $10,000 away for five years, where's that $10,000?
That's what I mean, and from what I can read in here, that's a reserve fund. But underneath the reserve fund, each one of those capital improvement projects that have been approved should be categorized separately, so that you can show the funds under that reserve fund separately. And if they're categorized as, that would be categorized as committed. Or restricted, I'm not sure which way that would go, as far as I categorize.
Yeah, what term do you use? And that's what goes back to Lois, giving it a number then.
But then you need to, when you go in to use those funds, it takes some level of authority for somebody to go in there and remove those funds out. If you're going in there to remove them for what it's defined to be used for, and we defined it by our definitions of the CIP for the generator, for example. If you're going in there to remove those funds to pay for the, an approved contract for the CIP or for the generator, then the superintendent of public works can do it, the manager can do it. But if you decide you need the money for something else, for another CIP account that's not quite funded, that should take board action to move that money. We shouldn't just be able to take that money out and slide it over. Because it's not going anyplace, it's staying under the big reserve umbrella, but it's moving from one CIP account to another. It's my concern that if we're gonna make that move, that should take board action, because the board should know where it's going. And there shouldn't be any question. When we start talking CIPs and restricted and unrestricted and enterprise funds, there's not a common definition out there for it. So we sat around, we've got these words back and forth at a board meeting, and we don't have any idea what the hell we're talking about. Because what John is referring to as an emergency fund, I'm referring to as a reserve fund, because there's not a definition for it.
And Randy doesn't have a contingency fund, but, because he's got miscellaneous, but Kirk's got contingency and miscellaneous.
Right. And it's a matter of what do you think, what's a contingency fund for? A contingency fund, in my opinion, and that's from, I mean, it's not from municipal projects, but it's from other projects, contingency is for cost overruns on budgeted items. If I budget a generator to be put in, and the cost of that generator has a contingency attached to it. And if the generator, and if it requires a little more labor to put it in, than what was initially bid in the base package, then that comes out of the contingency fund. I mean, that's my idea of a contingency, it's overruns for budgeted items.
Does that sound right from an accounting standpoint? Would you do that same thing with all of those accounts?
Okay, first of all, you're talking about the committed funds and such under the fund balance, and that's, that's the governmental funds? That doesn't have anything to do with the enterprise funds that Kirk is in?
Right.
So we're mixing apples and oranges already.
And that's where it gets confusing, because what...
That's why I did these in yellow, because this is the governmental funds. And the pink ones were the primary funds.
Well, and I don't know if I'm wrong or not, but when I read through this, when you call something a committed fund, you can call anything a committed fund. And it falls under a committed fund definition.
Well, we have the committed fund definition under the governmental funds.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But... Well, you run into the issue with Kirk is, as part of, under the enterprise funds, part of his, I'll call it contingency, contingency fund, is just that, contingency if there's a main break or something like that, that's not, that's not anticipated. It's not part of the regular routine maintenance and upgrade and replacement type of structure.
Not a budgeted item.
It's not a budgeted item, but it's also not a, it's not a, it's not a committed fund or designated fund. It's a fund there to cover an unanticipated event, whether it's John Q. Public rolls over a fire hydrant, you know, or whatever. Sorry, John, didn't mean to use that one. But, you know, whatever, basically, runs over a fire hydrant and, you know, ruptures a main or something along those lines, that it's not budgeted, there's no money set aside for it, but it's gotta be fixed today. You know, but when I'm looking at his budget from a contingency, that's where that contingency falls. It's not a miscellaneous item.
But I have to interject here. The contingency is, is that he has it set up as a department.
Correct.
And you were talking about a fund, so that messes up things already, so. So it's actually a department and...
Gatsby versus...
And if he needs some money, then you do a budget amendment, take it out of that department.
Right, but as it sits right now, you know, some of the things, like, for instance, the emergency operating fund, there is a formal board action that established that. The board took a form, formal action to establish three months for everybody, generally four months for the general fund. So I mean, that, that was an action that was taken that falls, as Lois was saying, on the, on the fund balances, that falls under, that falls under committed funds. You know, it takes, takes an action of the board, basically, to spend that, you know, set aside.
There's another step, though. That's the clarification of the budget definition utilization. That's who, who can manipulate it.
And you can start right out at this, at the top of it, with the difference between fund and department. A department is a numbered account, right?
Correct.
And the fund is what that number of accounts fall under.
Right.
Okay, but that needs to be in writing someplace, so some they can refer to.
I wouldn't even have thought of contingency and department.
And then it breaks down from there. I mean, then you come under the, under the department, there's different...
Accounts.
Accounts under those departments. And one of them could be a contingency account, one of them could be an emergency account.
True.
It depends on how you wanna define it. And that's where the problem comes in, is we got the basics difference between a department and a, and a fund, and now we're down to an account, which is, falls underneath the department.
So you're looking at having a contingency account under every department?
No. All I'm looking for is, I'm looking to have, to start at the top with department. I'm sorry, fund, department, account, define those.
Okay.
And then define the things that go underneath that, that are more subjective. And we don't have names for those yet, and if you have names for them, there's... We're looking for an account...
Supplies.
Yeah, be an account, that would be categorized under one of your fund, whether committed or assigned or however, it would be categorized as one of those, because it just, when you, when you assign that definition to an account, it just defines who can use it and how they can use it, correct?
Not exclusively.
Well, not necessarily. But, you know, under the general fund...
Because you can have whoever.
You know, I mean, that is the structure that the general fund has. I mean, everything, every department is then broken out under an individual fund, and then underneath that fund, the individual accounts that go into that fund. The only one in the general fund, other than the four-month contingency that's set aside in the fund balance, basically supposedly, once we get there, to have enough in it, is under the general services.
And I don't mean to interrupt you there, Randy, but I think you just turned it around. Isn't it Fund, Department, Account?
Yes.
Well, yeah, but it falls under, all these departments fall under the general fund. And then there are individual departments under the overall general fund, and in each of those, there's then a breakout of all of the, the individual accounts under that fund. The only one that I have, besides the already established, is in the General Services Administration Department, and I've got a miscellaneous tax fund there. That's the only, but that's a designated fund for Meyer. You know, now Meyer's filed, I've only got, I've only got $10,000 in there this year. So that's gonna already have to be amended if we decide to challenge Meyer.
But it's not a, it's not a fund, it's an account.
It's an account under the General Services Fund.
Yeah, okay, you set a, you set a fund.
Nope, it's under the General Services Department of the General Fund. It's an account. The miscellaneous tax tribunal is the 955 account under the General Services Administration Department. But that's the only one that the general fund has. I don't have any others.
You're referring to having some areas where different levels of authority can be used to pay from the accounts?
To utilize.
To use the, no...
For instance, an account of supplies. Sometimes if it's a larger amount, it goes to the board for approval.
Correct.
Sometimes if it's a smaller amount, it's part of our weekly...
No, I'm not, I'm not even talking about those accounts.
Okay.
I'm talking about the accounts that we hold in reserve for problems.
Okay.
Whether it be a reserve account or an emergency account.
Miscellaneous or contingency.
Miscellaneous, contingency. Any of those things that are held in more than one, held under more than one department in different accounts, but under the same name. There's a definition of how those, how a contingency can get used.
Yeah, and the board establishes that.
Through a budget amendment.
Well, generally, in the budget, the board, the board does that with the adoption of the budget. You establish that the manager has discretion within 10% of an individual fund to move, to move accounts and to pay.
Well, and the only reason I pick on contingency is because it's a smaller, it's usually down around 15% or so. But there should be a general definition or a general guidelines as to how contingency gets used, so that everybody at the, on the board level can read it. It's not the same...
I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, Dave, is because the only place that you have contingency funds in those miscellaneous funds is in the enterprise funds, don't have it in the general fund.
And that's what I said from the beginning, it's the difference in how they're, they're structured, even though it's still governmental, they're, and maybe that's how it started way before all of us.
Yeah. See, the general fund is laid out exactly as you just said. The general fund is the general fund. Under the general fund, you have all of the individual departments, and within those departments, you have all of the individual accounts that those departments fall under, with the exception of the miscellaneous tax tribunal under the General Services Account Department. And that is, I'll ask guests to put it in any other terms, because it depends on whether or not we have tax tribunal hearings, and if so, how many. We were not anticipating, because we were told we weren't gonna have one for Meyer, so we put in basically just $10,000 in there to cover Roger's local workings with potential challenges. Now, now that Meyer has filed, if the board decides to appeal or to challenge Meyer, that's gonna have to be sizably amended. And that only comes from the general fund fund balance.
But that's not really a miscellaneous.
That's what I'm asking for, what I'm asking for is a definition...
Right.
Of those funds, and what, who has the authority to go into that fund and use it for something other than it's not... Does it, could we just go in and do a budget amendment on it?
Has to be a budget amendment to the board, when the board approves it. Within, within the individual accounts, I can, I can approve up to 10%.
But all I'm saying is, is you've got a number of discretionary funds, for lack of a better word, whether you call them operational reserves or emergency or contingency, that appear under more than one account, under more than one fund.
I only have one.
We don't have a definition...
No, he's thinking about...
We don't have a common definition for those, those accounts.
No, not really.
Sure.
You have more than one miscellaneous.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
See, that shouldn't even be miscellaneous, there should be tax tribunal, because that's all that is, but you've got miscellaneous here.
Yeah, but it's, it's $100.
Right.
You know, I mean, they're, they're small amounts, and that's only, and that's mainly for data processing.
So what you meant to say was, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but you have one account that is used throughout your fund that says miscellaneous. You don't have one miscellaneous account.
Or supplies or...
But the term miscellaneous should be under one definition to define what it is.
Well, it is. It is in the budget. There is a miscellaneous under each of the departments, and it is defined in the transmittal as for data processing upgrades. That's what it's for, and each of those departments have computers. That's what it's for, it is designated. It's designated by transmittal, in terms of what...
Because it's in the department, you're saying?
Yeah.
So the miscellaneous in any given department is defined... undefined money in that account, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's defined.
It's miscellaneous for that account.
The only place where it's not defined is under the township board, because that is you. You decide how that's spent.
So Dave's looking for a definition of miscellaneous, no matter what...
There's gotta be a common definition for something as simple as miscellaneous.
Right.
Regardless of where it appears.
Of what department it's in.
There's gotta be a definition, the same as there's gotta be a definition for emergency.
It's gotta be anything that's not budgeted, because everything there is budgeted. So it has to be anything that is not budgeted within that department.
It can be whatever it wants. I'm just saying there should be a common definition for it.
Right, but based on what we have.
So when anybody on this board is looking at it for budget, and they, "What the hell is that for?" They can go look it up and say, "This is the definition of it."
Well, and the best reason there is, it should still be defined more clearly by 10% or whatever of that department, because why would one account of miscellaneous be $100 and the other be $10,000?
Well, and that's what I was...
That's my next point.
That's what I was just gonna say. If you come up with a definition of what miscellaneous is, all of that is, is a type of an expenditure. It's not a specific expenditure. So, you know, and where that gets, where you get that definition is, when I give you the budget that you approve, the transmittal defines what that is, because it's defined in the transmittal. I tell you what it is.
Yeah.
Okay, I had, I had proposed a definition, a general definition...
Know what order those are in.
Way back in April, and I think it's above the same thing we're talking about. And what I had proposed in, in April was a miscellaneous fund and a general administrative fund covering a large amount, number of minor expenses individually, too small to categorize into separate accounts or items.
Right.
If any individual expense increase in size in later periods, they shall be tracked with a separate account or line item, after they hit a certain point. And that miscellaneous fund balance shall not exceed 2% of the operational budget for the general fund and shall not exceed 5% for the wastewater, water and wastewater funds. That was taken out of the information Randy provided us.
Early on.
Yeah. And all I'm saying is, you take that information, you gel it down into one definition, and that's a definition. So if I'm sitting there trying to go through the budget and wondering what a miscellaneous fund is, I can go look, and I can see that it's not supposed to be more than 5% for the water or wastewater fund, that it can't be more than 2% for the general fund. As far as earmarking the different, the specific miscellaneous account under a department, as for what it's for, is irrelevant from, from the board's perspective. You just need to know that it fits the definition of a miscellaneous fund, and that if that amount exceeds a certain point, it will be put under its own account number. And it won't be called miscellaneous anymore.
Right, did you say it was 2% or 5% of...
And I got that from...
Of the fund or the department?
That came from that very early...
It was, shall not exceed 2% of the operational budget for the fund, the general fund, and shall not exceed 5% for the water and wastewater funds.
So if he's got six different accounts that have miscellaneous, six different departments that have miscellaneous funds, miscellaneous accounts in them, each one of those is supposed to be 5% of, you said the general...
That's what needs to be defined.
Yeah, and basically, that's what it amounts to, because in the general fund departments, the only miscellaneous there is, is for upgrades to the computer system. And that's only in those departments that have computers, because as they, as they move from seven to 10, Windows seven to 10, we have to upgrade, that's what, that's what it pays for.
I mean, if you have, if you have a miscellaneous account under, I'll pick a fund, Fund A.
Planning, yeah.
Okay, then that miscellaneous fund amount can't exceed 2% of the planning budget. Not the general, but the department budget.
The department, yeah, that says of the fund.
Yeah, and I think you're gonna see, you know, if you look through those, you're gonna see that they, I think the biggest is like $250, depending on how many computers there are in each of the departments. But that's the only miscellaneous that I have in the, in the general fund, other than the tax tribunal.
But there are miscellaneous in public works, right?
Yeah, and that's basically, when he does his calculations, basically, the rate, that's how he gets down to that miscellaneous, miscellaneous and the contingencies in terms of planning for the unexpected, you know, type of, type of things. And that's where you get into, oh, let's see, where's that definition? This is out of the fund definition, but that would be an unassigned fund balance. Basically, it's there to, to deal with unanticipated events that happen within the public work system that can't wait for a board meeting or can't wait for another action to be taken, that he has authority then to say, "Fix that main," you know, to keep the water going. And I think that's where we need to get some clarification in terms of definition. I think in the general fund, I think it's pretty clear. The only place that there's real flexibility is in the board's miscellaneous. Let me put a sizable amount there for unanticipated things that happen at the board level that the board has to take quick action on. But otherwise, everything that we do that exceeds what's planned in the budget is a budget amendment that Lois takes to the board and takes a formal action on it. The, the biggest action that the board has taken with the general fund is the establishment of that contingency, that emergency operating contingency. And basically, that, the authority for spending, that fell to me, in terms of if we're not gonna get the revenue sharing, then we have to transfer out of that fund to cover operations.
See, and it would, I guess would be my opinion, is if you've had an emergency reserve fund or emergency fund, that, that would be to cover unbudgeted or unplanned events. But contingency should be to cover budgeted events that go over budget.
Yeah.
Whether it, whether it is in revenue that we receive or expenses that go out, contingency should be to a certain percentage of whatever that department...
Fund department account.
Okay, but, but it should be a given percentage of, of a department. And that's where I think we need to distinguish the differences between contingency and emergency fund. I really think contingency should be budgeted, overruns, and emergency should be unbudgeted, happenings or catastrophic events.
Yeah, unanticipated.
Yeah. And then it gets down there into the, what we were kicking around before was the operational reserve. I'm not sure that you couldn't put operational reserve and emergency fund into the same account.
Two separate.
Because other than that, you're gonna have a whole bunch of money set in that we don't have anything to do with, because the operational reserve fund was as high as 25% in the general fund and 33% in the water and wastewater.
Yeah. I think you reversed it, or you started wrong. Yeah, it was reversed, the general fund was four months and they were three months.
Yeah, 33% for the general and then 25% for the, for the water and wastewater. But then you have to figure out, is, is that a reasonable amount of money to have set in there to cover an emergency fund that for unplanned, unplanned catastrophic events?
Yeah.
Is that enough money to cover that?
It could actually be a restricted fund. The, you know, what's with the restricted fund is, then it would have to be a board action to, to access it.
Which would be by, by a budget amendment, right?
Would be by a budget amendment, but if, if our revenue is short, I don't have two weeks to wait, basically, we have to transfer to cover those daily expenditures.
And that's my point. If it's in a fund, and it's defined that that's what it's for, then you can just do it...
Correct.
And report it to the board.
Right.
And it gets reported with, however you do it, it gets recorded with a budget amendment.
So it would need, that would fall, restricted fund has to have board action to spend, basically, but... So I think, yeah, that's, that's just those clarifications are what we need, because we're gonna be starting the 2020 budget here really quick. You know, we're wrapping up, wrapping up June, June 30th here pretty soon. And that'll give us the figures, basically, start plugging into the preliminary budget, so we can start working on that.
And I, the biggest, the most frustrating thing I found last year is we could spend a whole budget session talking about different departments and funds and accounts, and everybody's using the term different.
Yeah, yeah, and that's true. You know, realistically, the way you have to look at it is, when you're dealing with general fund budget, for instance, everything other than public works falls under the general fund budget as an individual department. Everything other than public works falls under the general fund budget as an individual department. Whether it's, whether it's the board or the manager, supervisor, planning, zoning, you know, whatever. Those are all individual departments under the general fund. They each then have a whole series of accounts and they need to deal with salary, with benefits, with, you know, uniforms, with water supplies.
If the, if the base definition of contingency fund is the same regardless of where it gets used. And if the base definition of emergency fund is the same regardless of where it gets used.
Mm-hmm.
Then everybody sitting here understands exactly where it's coming from and what it was planned for. And one of the things that according to this 90-some page. It's, it's up to the board to define each one of those and who can use them. And what they need to do and what the replenishment has to be.
And then they just have to correlate with the chart of accounts that Lois has to follow. So.
So is Lois the best person to put this together and find what, at least what we have now? Sure.
Yeah, I'm just saying we just need a, a common terminology to use for all of that.
Yeah, and where, and where, where it starts to separate is when you get into the enterprise funds. Because they are, it is a different kind of structure than what the general fund is. General fund's pretty straightforward, pretty simple.
Even if you're talking enterprise fund, the terminology for contingency and emergency should be the same.
And restricted.
I mean.
And he's got restricted besides.
Right, and they may have a different, that may be restricted versus committed. But that's because of the enterprise versus not enterprise.
Right.
But that just needs to be defined in the definition that a contingency fund under, uh, enterprise fund is a restricted fund. And then restricted or, uh, contingency under non-enterprise fund is, is a committed funder, however you wanna put it.
Yeah, whatever, just so we know, you know, what we're talking, when we put the budget together, just so we know what we're.
Then we get all that, we get all that basic stuff that you're doing right now. I think we just need to come up with a common term for, uh, reserve miscellaneous contingency. And I think we should put, uh, the operational reserve and emergency reserve under the same. Uh, you could just call it emergency reserves. And that would, that would be for, uh, revenue shortfalls and, uh, unbudgeted costs resulting from unplanned or catastrophic events.
So contingency is a budgeted item that has overrun.
Has cost overrun.
And that's, I don't have a problem with that. But like I said.
I've got a question. Uh, I don't have my budget in front of me, but at the end, near the end of my budget, both my budgets. There is the replacement and improvement. It's one number, but I break it out into two numbers. What's that called?
Good question.
That's gonna go away. It should be CIP.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's, it's back to.
Replacement improvement.
The name comes from the Charter of Accounts.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the replacement, is, so you're talking.
That's why I break it out because.
You're talking the infrastructure replacement improvement or are you talking?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about. And to me, I've got contingency for each activity or department, which is in my case 5%. I just use arbitrarily 5%. Which is basically what you were saying, sort of on budget.
That's a whole separate conversation because I disagree with that whole concept. If it's an infrastructure, if it's a replacement improvement fund.
Yeah.
It should be based on, uh, are you talking the water infrastructure?
Right, yeah, they're separate, yeah.
But that should be all planned out and then.
Right, it is planned out. That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
2043, we should have.
That might be called per the Charter of Accounts. What is that called? Do you know off the top of your head?
Uh, the replacement and improvement?
Yes.
Yeah, you have a separate department put out, you have, you know, money set aside.
Probably 891.
Yeah, but what's it called?
What's the department called?
It's called, he calls it replacement improvement.
What would it be under the Charter of Accounts?
Committed funds? If I'm not mistaken.
I don't have it here right in front of me either.
No, it's like 891.
Do you have the actual budget or something?
That's it, okay. Yeah, I think that's all of it, water and wastewater.
And I guess what I'm saying, when, and that's a whole different conversation with the.
Yeah, it's a separate, it's a separate.
Replacement improvement fund, but.
Yeah.
So that should be mapped out as to how much money needs to be put in there based on when the replacements are forecast to occur. And that's an asset management.
Because I don't charge anything to that department. I actually charge them by the asset.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's put in the budget and it's as a result of.
Put in the budget as this is the money we need to put into there this year?
Well, it's not just a year. I, I give, I give you this every year, Dave.
I know, I know.
It's multiple years. How much does budget cost?
Yeah.
How long do we take to fund it? Is it, is it short term?
Are you talking, are you talking CIP right now?
Yeah.
That's what I said.
Exactly right. So that's what ends up in the budget. And the, the budget's not here.
It's not?
No. But perhaps that might be called contingency, just because that's not what I call it. I've tried to change it a few times and that's why I describe it separately on a separate spreadsheet for water replacement and water improvement.
Yeah, there's water.
I thought, I thought we had.
Now, here, there's your budget sheet.
I thought we had talked about CIPs were gonna go under a reserve name.
This is what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Under the reserve.
I don't care what it's under.
So in other words, that shows up as one number.
But the only difference.
Maybe a different description. That's what I'm trying to get at.
The only difference is this is the sheet that's in the budget. The only difference from what I'm hearing, that's what we're looking at, Lois. The only difference I'm hearing we're talking about is they don't have separate account numbers.
Right.
Under, you know, identified by a separate account number, which is what you're talking about.
Well, what I'm talking about is if you're talking replacement and improvement, those are two different things. Replacement is a much larger ticket item than improvement.
Yep.
Or not necessarily, if you're talking about phase two, but I mean.
Yeah, you got two. You got, there's water fund, this is replacement improvement projects. And then here are the individual sheets that show what they are. Water control.
Well, it's replacement.
Generator, PL.
One's different, yeah.
Right.
You see, you can put, uh, capital improvement, approved capital improvement projects under improvement funds. As long as they're having account numbers separate.
Yeah, all I'm suggesting is if it in fact is identified as a contingency account in the, in the main budget.
If what's identified as contingency.
Just what I just told you, the place in improvement is.
No, what, what you're actually talking about, if, if it were in a fund, basically it'd be a committed fund.
Right.
I'm just saying in the budget, it shows up, I think, as a contingency.
Well, and I guess by the definitions we're kicking around today.
If you're gonna say it's gonna be a percentage, then I'd have a problem with that.
I'm not sure why you would call that an improvement fund a contingency fund. An improvement.
I'm not calling it that. I'm just telling you that's what, I think that's what it is called in the budget.
Yeah.
And then we have, then we have the same.
I've been, I've been, right, yeah.
That's where I don't believe it should go. I don't believe it should be under contingency.
But that's an accounting thing.
Contingency had a clearly defined definition of what went in there, that it wouldn't go in there.
Yeah, to me the contingency is, I have a separate contingency.
Yeah, why would it be a department? That, that doesn't make sense. Do you think contingency should be a department? Cause you're lumping everything together.
Right, I would think.
General fund, it's all separate. He's got miscellaneous.
I would think improvement would be its own, um, department. And replacement would be its own department or, yeah. Because you're talking, the replacement in public works, you're talking about the money we're putting aside that the asset management program says we're gonna need in 2043 to start replacing water lines.
But each one of those should have a contingency amount, 20%, 10%, whatever it is.
No, it doesn't need a contingency amount until it's budgeted. Until, until it's a budget to do something. We're just putting money away for when we were gonna.
It's, it's an estimated cost anyway. When you talk about the future, that, you know, it's a reasonable number, but it's not gonna be. Not necessarily exactly that number.
Yeah, contingency is usually when you, when you put something out for a bid or you get a price on something. You add 15% on the end of it for the cost overrun on it. If you, if you're, there's a difference between the 2043 water line replacement. The asset manager's gonna tell us we need to put money away, we're gonna put $10 away for that. There's a difference when you actually go out and price out what it's gonna cost. Because it's approaching that you're gonna put $10 away. That's when you add the contingency on there because now it's an estimate. Now it's something you're actually gonna do and you need the contingency there for the, for the budget overrun. But you don't need it when you're putting it away for the, uh, replacement fund.
Right, so each account, he doesn't have individual budgeted items in contingency fund. He's got just one fund. One department, one department, correct, thank you.
Or, or you could have two departments. You'd have one department being a replacement department and the other being the improvement department. And then each, each being a, an individual account under that department.
And each having their own contingency then?
Well, no, like under, under the, under the improvements department, you'd have, you'd have four, four accounts under that department.
Mm-hmm.
And then each of those accounts would have, um, separate subaccounts under them identifying what it was from, from this page.
Well, the generator is like the first one up there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the generator is what would have a contingency attached to it. Because you don't have a bid on what.
Well, when that year shows up, that's what it's gonna be.
But you, you don't have a contingency under the improvement fund itself. It's under the individual account. When you're talking about an individual thing, whether it be a generator, when you're talking about that specific item. Then it has a contingency amount attached to it because you have cost overruns that are anticipated in there.
And those should be the CIPs.
Those should be the CIPs. They should be identified as which CIPs they're for.
Mm-hmm.
And they shouldn't be all on there on.
With an account.
Are you saying you're gonna put a contingency fund right at the beginning?
No.
To me.
I'm, I'm saying when you budget something.
Like the generators, let's say with the generators.
Then there's a contingency that goes along with that. It's part of the bid. How many contracts?
No, but you're not bidding, you're just, you're, on the generator, we're looking at two years or three years.
And that's why it doesn't have a contingency on it.
Right, but right now, two, three years down. The minute we get to the point of, but, of bidding it, then they're gonna have to look at that point in time. But not at the point in time where you just putting some dollars for future use of it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so his contingency account is not, his definition doesn't have anything to do with that. His could be, no, it doesn't. Not right now, not now.
Oh, I don't know what it is now.
Yeah, he's just saying cost overruns for whatever, whatever. If he runs short on whatever project.
Well, and that's where I think we need to, we need to fine tune it. And the one that we come up with when Randy was working with it before, this back in April, was a contingency fund. Is, a contingency fund's a fund covering cost overruns for budgeted maintenance and repair items. And revenue shortfalls that are 2% or less of fund budget. A contingency fund balances shall not exceed 2% of the operational budget for the general fund. Shall not exceed 5% for water and wastewater.
See, that's what I tried to pin you down before, cause you said of the general fund. So if you're talking about one fund, then after that, you said, I shouldn't say fund, it was department. You said general fund just now when you read it. Should be the department, not the fund.
Right.
So, and another example is when I do a vacation payouts at the end of the year. If I need $5,000 in the water salaries department, that comes from contingency. Cause I don't know at the beginning of the year.
Is contingency even a fund? It's not a.
It's a department. It's a department, yeah.
Is it a department or is it an account?
No, it's a department. That's why I said that doesn't make sense.
There's an account within that department for contingency.
You're lining it in hundred. Yeah. There's, the department is contingency and the account is miscellaneous.
Which stretches it out even more.
Right, yeah. But see, where you're gonna run into your contingencies is, is Dave, as you're defining them is, is in the, uh, the, in the water fund, for instance. In the replacement schedule. You know, uh, because they're forecasting out X number of years in terms of the, you know, the funding basically for a replacement some point in the future. And that's where your contingency is gonna come in, because you don't know what the ultimate cost.
That's what Randy and I were talking about. You wouldn't have a contingency on there until it's actually something you're gonna do. And you're putting money away for that, uh, replacement fund, there's not a contingency attached to that.
Unless you're trying to build, you know, like a, you know, using a, using an escalator of some sort where you're looking at, you know, you've added 3% a year to cover anticipated, you know, increase in cost over, over time.
But that's not a contingency.
That's different.
That's for a defined, that's for a defined cost. Anytime you're, and again, this is just my opinion, anytime you're applying a contingency to something. It's for something that you actually are bidding or have a price on. Then there's a contingency for cost overruns. But a replacement fund is not something you're bidding. It's something you're collecting money for because that's what asset management says you need by this date. So you don't put a contingency on that until you, it actually, until you decide we're gonna replace a mile and a half of water main along this road and this is what it's gonna cost us. When it's no longer an estimate and it's actually a cost, then there's a contingency on the end of it.
Let's call a change charter.
Well, but then where's that, then where does that contingency come from?
Comes out of the fund that you've been saving it for. It's just split up that way.
Split it up 5% of it.
If you had $1,000 under this mile and a half of water line that you're gonna replace. And when you actually get the cost in there, you may have $900 that is actually what the bid price is. And the rest of that $100 comes out is in the contingency. And any bid Kurt's ever got's got a contingency amount on it.
Usually.
And even if you don't get one, you should put one on it.
Uh, monster. Either, okay. Any, any further cost that's not there, it comes back to the board.
Well, it'll come back to the board.
The only, the only one that could add to it would be the board.
But when you, when you, when you get done, you mean further cost overruns that aren't there? Yeah, that would have to come back to the board.
So it ends up being 6% instead of 5%. You had, is that what you're saying?
No, but on a contract item, you got, the contract is $500 and you got a $100 contingency. If it turns out to be $650, you just went over that whole amount. So that needs to be a, a budget adjustment.
Yeah.
So, so someone in the, on the staff can't take the budget items they have, they have to come back to the board.
Right.
And, and, and we'd be willing to do that.
And that's who's supposed to be responsible.
But it lets you track something.
Because it drives me nuts, Kurt, when you sit there and rattle off an account number, cause I, I think what the account number is. And I'm not gonna commit them to memory.
Well, Len wanted that, so that's why I put that in there.
Yeah, because we had no clue what accounts they were coming out of.
Okay, I was mistaken. I've got one contingency per department.
Okay.
And one replacement and improvement number per department.
Per department.
Which is actually divided into the two.
Per fund.
But that, yeah, per fund, but then, but then you break it out.
Okay.
Then you break it out separately.
What's the department activity?
Department is like, uh, lift stations, car dunks.
The main.
So contingency is a department and then he's got miscellaneous, some of that.
That's the way the budget is laid out.
It's got its own special department.
By, by department and then it counts under that department. But if you, putting funds for the future, each year you're gonna increase that fund by a percent, whatever amounts to it. To keep it going in that. And then that, at a point in time when you bid it out, hopefully you'll have enough dollars in there to not only for the actual cost factor, but for a contingency at the same time. If not, then you'll have to come to the board and that, if you don't have it identified somewhere.
Well, the, the only thing I can point back to is when we did the asset management plan for road. Uh, there's something like $183,000 that asset management said that you needed to put away annually for road repairs. Not, you're gonna use all $183,000 a year. But that's what it's gonna cost you on average over the next 15 years to maintain the roads. We start out low and as we get in the second half of those 15 years, it's gonna be more than $183,000. But asset management says you need to put away average $183,000 a year for that. That's the same thing the replacement fund is doing. Is asset management's gonna tell you, you need to put $250,000 away a year for water infrastructure replacement. So that when you arrive at 2043, you've got at least enough money to pay for the first phase. Not the whole thing, but at least the first phase. Because asset management is looking at the different phases when that stuff has to be played. You may have a mile that has to be done in 2043 and you might not have another stretch that needs to be done until, until 2050. But you keep, it's, asset management sets up a program that you have to collect so much and put it in that fund annually so that you can cover those costs. So that when it comes up, we don't have to go and borrow money to do everything.
So what do we do with the repair and improvement account versus the CIPs? How do we change the way that's set up? So it's more defined, because we want the generator, let's keep using that. We want the generator have a chart of account number because we are setting specific monies aside. And.
And question, are the generator, when we buy it, it would be an asset?
After, yeah. So in the meantime, while we're
An asset revenue and expenditures report.
But while it's, while we're saving for it, and CIP, if we're putting ten thousand a year, I forgot what the number was, for ten years.
I think we actually funded that.
Well, I'm just using that as an example, because we all know about it.
Okay.
So you got ten thousand you're putting away for the next ten years, okay? And it goes under, it's a CIP, it should have a chart of accounts number, because we're gonna buy that generator. It needs to go, not in replacement improvement, we either need to change that title of that department, or make it the CIP department.
Replacement fund and an improvement fund.
Right, so if we make it a replacement CIP department, right, is that?
It would be an improvement fund, department, improvement department.
Yeah, no, that's a replacement.
Oh, not a generator, it's improvement.
Okay, the generator.
Never wronged me before, it's an improvement.
So replacement and improvement should have, we could leave them together and have the replacements have one set of chart of accounts and the improvements have another.
I see, that's, I mean
They're gonna have separate CIPs.
Yeah, but I don't care how you do that, you can leave them together if you want, as long as there's a breakout of where, what is for what.
For tracking.
Well, yeah, what CIP has got how much money in it, because how many times we run across that? We've been collecting for some for ten years and there's no money there.
That's what started this.
Right.
Exactly what started it, and who can move it, and how much, and there's no tracking.
That's what got me going.
Right, which meant, which I was saying about the chart of account numbers, so we have it identified, the generator, the ATV compressor, whatever.
So, I mean, all we're gonna say is they need to be individually identified, the CIP accounts, we already said that six months ago.
So, Lois, how do you see that, how do you see that fitting into this part of the budget? What do you see happening?
Um, well, because, for instance, the generator is an asset, I don't see it getting an expenditure number.
No.
If I go to the chart of accounts, I'm not gonna
Yeah, but anything future, Lois, how would you?
No, no, I mean, before you get to future, before it gets to be an asset, we don't have it yet.
Right, yeah.
We're gonna do this ten thousand for ten years.
It would be, it would be an account, it would be an account under
Right, so
A separate account.
Or an actual sub-form, you know, like Kirk's improvement.
No, 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 we don't want it separate, we want it in here, so when we look at it, we see this is year five and we got fifty thousand dollars sitting there. We wanna, we wanna see it.
That's not gonna be in the revenue and expenditure part.
This, yeah, it's not gonna show on there.
CIPs need to be in this budget.
Not in the revenue and expenditures, no.
What you're collecting this year would be in the budget.
Right.
What you're gonna, what you're gonna see in here is what's budgeted for this year.
Yeah.
Then you need a separate CIP account.
Yeah, but it, but it's only gonna show, in this, in this budget, it's only gonna show this year's contribution to it.
It's not gonna show that we have a hundred thousand for the year for it.
That's gonna be on a different report.
Yeah.
Because you can't show that in the budget.
No, I don't, you'd have huge shortfall every year in the budget.
Three years, what, yeah.
And that's why, that's why this is set up this way. In Kurt's budget, the water, water budget, when you get down to replacement or improvement, he's got the total dollar amount here in the budget, which is gonna be a budget for this year. Then you've got what it's being spent on in a different ledger. There's what it's being spent on, to come up with that total for that year.
Yeah, but they don't equal.
They will, this is what was spent for two thousand and eighteen. All of these items go into these two counts. The contingency miscellaneous and the replacement improvement miscellaneous, they're being broken out in this attachment to the budget.
So, all I would like to see happen is that we start out with the basic definitions.
Okay.
Starting at the top and working our way down, until we get down, I mean, that's way down at the bottom of the definition section.
Yeah, it's gonna be definitely in the chart.
And we're certainly gonna be nagging again until we get to that bottom. But it'd just be nice to start out with the, at the top of the ledger and make it go way down with the definitions and include in those definitions the, the contingency, whatever you want to name it, as a definition in there, just so we've got a definition to look at. And where you apply them really doesn't matter, as long as everybody knows what their, what the definition of them is.
Now, we've discussed all this and that, we're talking about putting away dollars for ten, twenty, thirty years from now. Physically, dollars we're putting away in that, are we talking about, is that what we're talking about?
Just identifying where it's going.
No, if we're talking about ten, twenty, thirty years, we're talking physical dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, now, talking from the treasurer's standpoint, then I've gotta start figuring out how to invest that and how to protect that until you actually need it. And then, and right now, we have, we don't really have any kind of a definition for some of this. We're gonna have to look at how we're gonna do that, or are we just put for sewer department, water department, or public works? X number of dollars, and then, uh, public works will refer to that lump sum broken out as such?
Yeah, when we break out the lump sum.
Okay.
So we figure out
The budget document would work with that to predicate how it's being spent.
So would you, would you say five hundred thousand is saved for whatever, so let's say the compressor, just because, the generator.
I don't really care what it is.
No, 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 let me start from the beginning, because you're gonna need to know what to do with it. So we've got fifty thousand dollars saved for the generator. Are you saying that needs to go, take it to Range Bank, and as, every time we have budget money, we're putting another ten thousand, you take it over to the bank, is that what you're saying?
No, I just take it over and put it in an account that identified to public works. And the public works are gonna have to break that out then.
Yeah, restricted funds, and it's gonna correlate to the budget.
It would have to tie into that second page.
So that's something, we'll have to figure out how to do that, because that dollar's gonna be sitting there for twenty, thirty years, forty years, and that have
And you need an interest line too.
Yeah, there'd just be a summary sheet for the account of the bank that says
Budget.
The bank doesn't care.
No, they don't care, but you care.
I care, because
This form back here.
You're giving me X number of dollars to invest, and I have to, you know, say, okay, you give me a hundred thousand dollars, I got a hundred thousand here. I don't care what it's for, it's for the, for the work department.
That amount of money.
So if you take somebody else.
It has to be going one of those.
Well, you need to keep it separate, at least water and sewer separate.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, I'm talking about your department as a whole, as an example.
Yeah, so you have your restricted funds already set up, and you're not gonna have to break out of your restricted fund that's restricted for this project, or that project, or whatever, you have a lump sum and restricted that correlates back to the budget, that has a sheet that says, okay, based on this sheet, Ernie, in your restricted fund, you should have three hundred and ten thousand dollars, how much do you have, plus interest?
I don't really care, but just that it's restricted fund period and the interest will go to that. Now, the question I have, we start putting long-term savings, I start looking at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting here, where I'm putting it, all over that.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
You have to start spreading it.
Spreading it further than I know.
That's why you're the treasurer.
But that's what I'm asking then, do you go to Range Bank and you take that two hundred and fifty thousand and you open an account?
Yes. Yes, yes.
More than two fifty.
Then we've got, whatever the next one is, the eight-inch main and PRV on Brookton, it, we're putting twenty thousand a year for that, and you go to Range Bank and you open another twenty thousand?
No, no, I just booked one.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
And for him, every time he gets to two hundred and fifty thousand, he has to have a different account, insurance purposes.
I have to go someplace else.
FBI seat.
And be honest with you, at Range Bank, the collateral, no longer doing it. So we're doing it in another way to come up with that dollars and that, and, uh, I don't have any other way, we're, we're gonna be spreading it further and further out now.
You can't really, you can't really invest it in long-term CDs, because the break might happen today. So you have to have liquid, you have to have enough liquid available to be able to cover an unanticipated event.
See, I can put it in CDs, but it's gonna cost me if I break it.
Yeah.
Do so.
So you have to have a cash account besides
Yeah, I have another account.
Restricted cash.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as I know what you want.
I still am struggling with how this replacement improvement account department shows up, how, how any of this is gonna connect. I, I can't visualize that.
You're not gonna have it in an annual operating
It's gonna take a while to start building these things.
Sorry.
It's gonna be part of your unrestricted composition.
But shouldn't they total?
Not, no, because you're dealing with an annual budget, not with a total fund budget.
But this is, this is your CIP for that year, there's gonna be the percent that you're, the part you're
CIP is not, CIP is not part of the budget, it's a supplement to the budget.
Yes, but there's gonna be an amount of money for these four projects, taken out for one year, that's gonna have to balance on here.
That's where it's gonna come from.
Right, those, those numbers are gonna have to be the same, how does that show up on here?
It doesn't show up in this budget, this budget is what you're projecting your cost is going to be, it's a projection, it's not a finite, come December thirty-first, we will have X dollars, that's, that's not what this is.
No, I don't mean that. If we're gonna save, whatever this total is, this is the water improvements, it's got a motor control, the ATS generator upgrade, upgrade to PLC, eight-inch main, what is that, five, fourteen? Fourteen and twelve, twenty-six, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that he's gonna say is the total cost of those four for his life. They're twenty years, thirty years, forty years, okay? Annual amortization is what he's gonna take out every year or put into the budget. That's the number that has to be on here for this year.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
How does that show up on here? This is, if we leave it as the replacement and improvement department, this is just the improvements.
You would have it separate account.
Separate, okay, that's what I'm saying.
Separate account for whatever it is, for this much money this year. And it'll show you what you put in for the last two years, three years, basically.
That's what I was looking for.
But it will not give you the total, if it's a twenty-year.
The total, right.
That's on
On this extra one.
The other report.
So, replacement improvement can either be, the department can stay that way, and we can have the sub-accounts, or we split them up.
So, under miscellaneous, then you would have individual sub-accounts under miscellaneous that would identify what they are.
These four, in this case. Is that right? Does that make sense?
And they would have, they would have
Does that make sense, Kurt?
They would have a separate account number, extension.
Yes, yes.
You know, as a, as a
And then one is budgeted, and we do it, and it gets a chart of account number, it goes into the assets, it comes off of here. Correct?
Um, no, there's nothing gets charged to that during the year, because we're not buying the asset.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's just staying on here as an expense.
It's not, you're not expending it, it's just because you're not spending the money buying that this year, it just becomes part of the unrestricted net position.
We're budgeting it then.
But you're budgeting it, yeah.
We're doing budgeting, I'm trying to find a, a good example in here, and I think it's probably under fire.
That's why in the wastewater fund, that is now a pretty large number. It's because we've been putting that money in there for specific purposes.
It's just not itemized.
It is itemized. Six ways from.
So we're gonna put aside a hundred and thirty-two thousand in this budget, or we did, actually, because this is nineteen. For those four water items, that should be a hundred and thirty-two thousand in here. And I would take miscellaneous off, because it's supposed to be specific. And under improvements, I would have project one, four, five, and six, or however you wanna list them, and it comes up to a hundred and thirty-two thousand, that should be right there. No, actually, go over here. And then if you have something else, you list it as the next project, and put it in there. So the total on the replacement and improvement account would be all of those.
Uh, no, because, go back to your, you're saying a hundred and
No, this is the annual amortization.
Okay, well, you were putting in the total of the project.
No, I did a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Okay.
That's what we're amortizing this year.
The early month.
Right.
Okay, you can put that there, but nothing's gonna be spent on that this year.
No, and that's where this comes down to. If the board says at some point, which is what we've done, we need to take fifty thousand out of there and put it to XYZ project, because it just broke. Now, we've got a budget amendment that says we're taking fifty thousand out and it's going to this project, which now becomes an asset. At some point, when it's done, when it's done. And it comes off of here.
So even if something is constructed on that list, that's been planned for and saved for, it still comes back to the board to approve, because it's a big number.
But we're approving things and over the course of how many years.
But I'm just saying, you still have
No, I don't mean that, we're planning this, we're approving this, but we don't know what we approved five years ago.
That's what I'm saying, at the very last minute, you get one more chance to approve it, that's all I'm saying.
There's no records, there's no tally.
You're, you're talking about doing a budget amendment when the project is approved. But the budget is for revenue and expenditures, you're buying an asset, that's, that's not an expenditure.
Because it's coming out unrestricted.
I'd be happy just to see the definition.
Yeah.
Yeah, because really, you know, what you're, what you're looking for
But you have to know where it's going and what's coming from to know what the difference is.
That's what you're asking.
Yeah, but what you're, what you're, you're talking about two different reporting formats.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that, that you're looking for, it cannot all be in the annual budget.
Not the reductions and additions, no.
So what you need to get to where you're, you're looking at, and Lois, you're gonna have to help me with what the title is, but you're, you're looking at what's being projected to be spent this year in the budget, based upon whatever revenue we've got coming in. If you're looking for that total multiple-year look about where we are, then that is
What's that, repair and improvement?
Nope, 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 I'm looking at
Isn't that, isn't that CIP function?
Yes.
Because they have to, every year, or maybe six months or so, they have to decide which project is a priority in terms of putting money away and, and also the updated cost of the project.
Which is an addendum to this, and it shows everything that's in the fire fund budget, where it is, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve through eighteen, so you're looking at the one that extends out, basically, to show here's the dollar amount that we have through eighteen, here's the fund balance of it for that particular project. So that's an addendum to this.
Right.
It's not part of the budget. So I think this is what you're, you're talking about.
Just what you're taking, yes.
Where you've got, you know, so for two thousand and eighteen, on computer equipment, let's say, for two thousand and eighteen, their total fund balance was fifty-four thousand eight-seven through two thousand and sixteen, and they're not budgeting anything for these two years.
Yes.
That's, so this is what you're referring to, as, this is an addendum to the budget, it's not part of the budget, it's the history, fund history.
So this could be called something, I think that's where you were going.
Yeah, the fund history.
Actually, the fund balance is right on the bottom.
The actual fund balance for everything, but for individual line items, you know, the individual items running across, that's what you were saying.
Those are department expenses, they're not fund balance.
But there's money set aside this year
But that's what she's talking about, she's talking about the accumulated, what do we have set aside through this year? And what are we projecting for the next, for this budget year, or whatever, right?
Yeah, but this has to be called something in the meantime, it's gonna fall under that department.
Whatever account history that is, you know, whatever, whatever that line item
No, no, because it's just, it's just what's being budgeted for this year.
I know, I know, but it's attached to an account line item, so whatever that line item is, would show on your, under that line item, it would show where you, how much you have in that line item currently, and now you're adding to it this year this much.
Uh, no, that's actually incorrect, because that is a revenue and expenditure.
Well, I know, I'm just using this as a format, I had to look at, so you would have, so you would have something, you would call it such and such, you know, whether it's ATS generator, fund history, or whatever, under this, under this account number, and here's what you've deposited all these years, and this year you should have this much.
And that's your balance, yes, exactly.
And then that would be good for the CIP.
For the CIP.
So, so we get all done with this, or are we gonna get some definition?
Yeah.
So the definitions we need, we already know that it's the, what the funds are, and we know that they each have a department and an account, right?
Yeah.
So the question is, we need reserve, contingency, miscellaneous, restricted, non-restricted definitions?
No, it would be nice to start out from the top on a sheet of paper and summarize definitions.
Okay.
And start right out with
Fund.
Fund, department, account, and what the definitions of those are, and work your way all the way down to reserve, contingency, emergency, whatever you wanna call them. And so start at the top with, with funds and departments, and go all the way down to those, the, the minor things that are contingencies and reserves, and just put a definition to all those.
For general fund, you know, for, for instance, general fund, you're gonna have general fund, and then you're gonna have a definition of what the department is, and then in each department, you're gonna have an account. And that's pretty much what you're gonna have.
He wants a definition of general fund, or fund, and then a definition of department, right, and a definition of an account.
Not a particular department, just what the department is.
Well, the planning, you know, and then under planning, you're gonna have all of the individual accounts under planning. And if one of those is miscellaneous, you need a definition of what miscellaneous is.
Right, so I don't wanna.
And that's all you're gonna have.
I wanna see all the different accounts under planning with a definition on them.
Yeah.
Account has one definition.
Right.
Yeah, what is an account?
And miscellaneous has one definition. Doesn't matter what account calls them, it has one definition.
And that's, and that's all you're gonna have under general fund, because there, there are no contingencies or anything under general fund. Everything is a specific dollar amount.
Okay, we're, we're looking for definitions for all of those things, right?
Yep, so for general fund, you're gonna have four, may, maybe five definitions.
Yeah.
When you get to the enterprise funds, now you're gonna have similar. You're gonna have the water fund, and under the water fund, you're gonna have individual departments under the water fund, and each of those will have.
But the definitions of fund, department, and account should be the same. Doesn't matter if we're talking.
That's right.
Public works or general fund.
But then in public works, you're also gonna have replacement and improvement.
So, so there may be, there may be some additional accounts.
Correct.
Or departments. That department or account.
The department's on public works.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have department, and then on each department, then you have a.
There'll be accounts.
So what I can do is make up something preliminary, and then people can question it, and I can add to it.
Right, and then ultimately.
Say, what about that, or what is that?
Final one would be, what does contingency mean, what does miscellaneous mean, and what does replacement mean, or what does improvement mean?
Right, and all I'm saying is, is it doesn't matter whether you're looking under public works or whether you're looking under general fund. The definition of miscellaneous should be the same.
Same.
So are all of the count, of the, make sure I get the right words. Are all of the departments and the accounts in public works the same all the way through? It's water and wastewater, the same.
They don't have them all the same.
All the departments and accounts?
Yes.
No?
No, they're all different.
Yeah.
The departments are all gonna be different. The funds are different. You've got a water fund, a wastewater fund, solid waste fund, store water fund.
Those are the funds, yes, so I know.
And then under the funds, you're gonna have different department titles, because they have different operations. Some have the lift station department, some have reservoir, water reservoir departments. They're gonna be different in each of those.
For instance, the, the waterfront.
The definition of the department is still the same.
The department's definition is the same. It's just called something different.
Right, yeah.
But it's, the department.
And then definition of the accounts will be the same.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
It's like supplies or repair and maintenance.
Correct, but they're gonna be different from water to wastewater to solid waste.
Yep.
Different titles.
Okay.
Well, Lois can put something together and mull it around.
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah, I like mine in French.
It's already different.
Not Greek, yeah, I think it's in Greek right now. All right, clear as mud?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can just see ten years down the road, different board, and then we got a big dollar set on this thing.
So why do you have definition board?
Yeah, what I'm saying, the board, the board will change definitions.
I know, I have.
Why would you care if all's stood around?
Well, you know, that, that's, that's precisely why the City of Marquette has a three-hundred-page budget. Because every one of those is broken.
It's an item.
Separately, and it got all the cumulative data, and these are, they're under a different budgeting format. Anyway.
Okay.
So, we shift to recruitment. I think the best thing is just to make sure Randy stays, at least through this board's tenure, and we don't have to worry about it. Men shipped.
We can't make any decisions here anyway.
Well, I know.
We can't, but I guess what, what you need to really decide is, do you want to go forward and do an RFP, basically, to start getting that put together and get sent out, um, which I think you've already decided that's the route you wanna go. The board, the board has, um, the sooner that occurs, the better. Um, and then, uh, I would, would think that you're gonna wanna do, um.
Well, what's the timeline you're looking at, Randy? What do you think the timeline is, should be for this whole process? I mean, that's, granted, you stayed OMA.
Putting, putting together, putting together the RFP shouldn't take more than a few days. I mean, if, if the format, I, I had given you a format, the most recent one that I saw was the one from Royal Oak, and that was their format for the RFP, basically, um, which is a fairly standard format for an RFP. You have to tell them what it is you're looking for, what you wanna do. You, you include a job description, you include a, you know, variety of, things with information on benefits and all that. Um, once you do that, it's gonna take them probably one to two weeks to put together a, a response proposal. And I'm guessing you'll get one from MTA, you'll get one from MML, you'll get one from local folks, probably. Stang will probably put one in, and I'm not sure who else is still in business. Michigan Works might wanna do one.
So it'll be a.
And it could be anybody else. Basically, you just advertise it generally. You advertise it on your website, you go on the Michigan Township Association, Michigan Municipal League, and the, uh, Michigan County, or Michigan County Association websites, and, and put that there's an RFP for township manager, and then contact whoever for a copy of the RFP.
Well, and that's as far as we've gotten so far, just we're gonna put out the RFP.
Right.
Uh, once we get that back, then the board can take a look at it and decide who they wanna go with.
Well, let me give you an example. We're, we're doing the same thing, and I had mentioned this, Lynn, we're doing the same thing right now with the municipal employees retirement system, because our, our CEO just advised us within the last thirty days that he's gonna be retiring as of January first. So we're in that process right now. Uh, we are, uh, we've, we've issued an RFP, um, which was large, because we're an eight, eight billion dollar operation, we're twelve billion now. But it was large, it was a lot of requirements, and we on the seventeenth of this month, uh, are going to interview the top three. There's a team set up inside the organization that's gonna evaluate the proposals. We're gonna interview the top three and then select one to award. But that process now has taken three, four weeks to get to that point. And then basically, you're gonna have to give them, they will tell you how long it will take them to do what you want them to do. And I'm, you're gonna be taking roughly about a three to four month process.
So here's a three to four months?
For, to get through this process, to get you candidates to consider.
Before they can come back with their completed project to present to the board?
Oh, no, 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 they, they would do that within a couple of weeks before they're, but basically, then you turn them loose to go out and do their recruitment. They do the advertising, they do the analysis of the candidates, and they bring you back a pool, basically.
Will they, will they be back by October the thirty-first?
I would hope so.
I wonder how fast we get this moving, too.
Yeah, this is just July, so August, September, October.
So, so the process we're putting together here is, we've got a job description.
Well, you've got everything you need.
Okay, the next step for the board is to request an RFP. You don't have to do that every time, correct?
Uh, the, well, what the board would do is direct that an RFP be ready for the sixteenth, for you to act on.
No, I understand that, but the process for the board to do that replacement, five years from now, is gonna be to request another RFP.
Probably.
The procedure, the procedure, policy.
Yeah.
Policy.
And the next one is gonna be to award it, and then analyze the results, and make a selection. And then we're gonna, the board, the final step the board does is gonna be do interviews of however many candidates we wanted.
Right.
And make a selection from that.
Correct. And then they're gonna have to give notice.
And that's all we're doing, as far as I thought, is just establishing the procedure, and once we get happy with the procedure, then we're gonna request an RFP for what's going on here at the end of the year, but.
I think that's the procedure. You just mentioned it. I think that's what it is.
Hold on, do a statement writing.
But I would, yeah, but I would suggest that you do that sooner rather than later, to get the process going, yeah.
And who writes that? Can you write it?
We do here, yeah.
Okay.
How much?
We don't know, because that's what they're responsible at, tell us how much.
They'll, they'll come back with the.
They'll come back with a proposal.
When you let the RFP, they'll come back with, it's a bid, it's a bid.
So he would need, Randy needs direction to, first of all, do the RFP, and then who you wanted to go to.
After.
Like you said.
Well, I think you've got a sample RFP. All we have to do is make that be ours, basically, put our information in.
The Royal Oak one you talked about?
Yeah, I would use that one, because basically.
I thought that was pretty expensive.
Well, and that's pretty much what you're gonna have to do, because you're gonna have to give them the information. They need, they need as much information as you can give them with the, their proposal, and say, to do what you want, it's gonna cost as much.
The bet, the more, the better, so that they have.
More the better.
Yeah.
I suppose.
So they can't, so if you want something that's not in there, then they're gonna charge you. You want everything in there possible.
And you tell them, you tell them in that, and I think you saw, you saw that in the Royal Oak one, that, you know, they identify basically the area that you wanna recruit from. You wanna include a local area, do you not wanna include a local area? Do you wanna go out on a broad base? Do you wanna have, you wanna advertise in the local paper? Uh, in the local associations and all, you put all that in your RFP, so they know what their level of work is going to be to, before they put together the proposal.
I don't mean to take all the nickel and diamond away from us, but wouldn't it be up to the manager to come to us with the proposed RFP guidelines, and who he's gonna recommend that we distribute it to? And just.
That's what I just started to say.
Take action on it at the board meeting? I mean, we don't have to sit here and decide who we're gonna distribute it to.
Target for the sixteenth.
No, unless you said something like, we don't wanna go through all that, we just wanna put it in the mining journal and call Stang.
Yeah, we pretty much made the decision, we're not gonna do that.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, is if, if that's what you want, I can put that together for you for your meeting on the sixteenth.
And then you'll move, and we'll.
And then you'll.
Direct it.
Take an action to either send it out or not send it out.
So on the next board meeting, we should have a proposed, uh, request for an RFP along with who you wanna distribute it to.
Consider request for proposal process.
All right.
Okay.
It's good for me.
Sounds good.
And then, okay, additional now, what, what else is the timeline that you're looking at? Once that's done, okay, it's gonna take you, say, by.
Well, you tell them, you tell them when you want your response. You can give them two weeks, three weeks, whatever, as long as you give them a complete package, they should be able to look at it and say, okay, this is our standard package X, you know? It costs this much.
Actually, uh, we would have to have it back to meet the end of the year.
Oh, yeah.
We'd have to have it back by at least September.
Well, your, your target, I would think your target would be to have candidates, candidates submitted to you and interviews completed by November.
Well, when should we have the RFPs back, by the middle of next month?
I would say probably within three weeks. You'd set a timeline of three weeks.
It's a matter of making a decision right there and just send it.
Yeah, no, wait a minute, how the hell, how the hell are we gonna make a choice? If we don't get it till November, we're gonna.
Candidates, hi, to you by.
Huh?
Candidates to you by November, Chuck.
Interviewed by November.
Interviewed by November.
But that, they're only gonna be recommending who we need to look at and who we would decide. You wanna spend at least thirty days, and I thought sixty days, with the candidate that we choose.
Right.
So that backs it up.
Now, if you finished your review process and did your interviews by November, and offered somebody the position, that they have to give three months' notice, that still gives me two to three months working with them before the end of May.
Not until you put in your application for asking for an extension.
I've done that five times already.
No, you've talked about it.
Yeah, I've told the board.
But we don't have a letter.
Well, I don't have to issue you one until September, but what I, that's why I'm telling you well in advance that this is what I'm going to do, request an extension through May. It's up to you whether you grant that or not, or wish to grant that.
Well, that's the same thing that we started looking, we started looking for in the superintendent of public work.
Correct, well, and yes.
Wasn't based on a letter.
I mean, if the board wants me to submit a letter now, I can submit a letter now. I mean, that's not a problem, but I've done it at public meetings, simplified.
But by contract, you're not required to by September.
Right, well, it says by September first.
Yeah. By September first, yeah.
Did, excuse me a second, did, um, Kirk give you anything in writing yet that he's leaving?
No, verbal, uh, verbal, and he has acknowledged, he's acknowledged he's gone.
So we don't have to have anything, unless the board says absolutely, Randy put it in writing, there's no reason to have it in writing. So we can have that discussion if we want to.
I, I accepted this verbal retirement as of December first, and he's gonna have to process his retirement papers.
Thirty days before.
I think he has to do that at least thirty days before.
He wants his pension checked.
Pension. Yeah, so I mean, I don't have any problem with doing that, if that's what the board wants.
We knew at the meeting on the sixteenth, you got everything together, uh, you got the RFP that you wanna distribute, you got the list of people you wanna distribute it to, and the board says, yeah, do it. And you put, uh, the tenth of August in there for, for those RFPs to be returned, and for the board to make a decision at the middle of August meeting on who you wanna award it to. How much time? If you award it in the, the second meeting in August, what kind of timeline do they have before they provide you with the candidate list?
That's gonna be in your proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be in their proposal. We can do this within this period of time.
All right, so then we're gonna make a decision now.
They're gonna tell you what they can do, right?
Or if you said, we have, we've got six weeks to get this done, let's say he's gonna be gone in December. You'd say, well, we wanna have this, whatever you can come up with, by November first.
Right, yeah, and this, this would be an electronic distribution, so I mean, do we scan it in and send it electronically, so they'd have it Wednesday?
So we won't, we don't really know.
Time frame.
Get the RFPs back, as to how long they're gonna take to provide us with a candidate list.
Well, it depends on how wide-reaching you wanna go to.
If you do regional, it's probably not.
Well, that's why, that's why I suggested. That's why I suggested that you concentrate on the, this Great Lakes region, basically, because everybody who's in the Great Lakes region's familiar with wintertime. They, they know about ice, they know about distance, they know about travel, you know, all that kinda stuff. If you start getting into Texas and California and that, now you're dealing with seasonal issues, and you know, can they survive the winter here, you know, that kinda stuff.
But even then, do anybody, I'm sorry, Ernie, are, are they gonna have townships in all these Great Lakes states, too?
Wisconsin.
Are they gonna understand?
It's a, they have comparable. Some have, some have townships, some have boroughs, some have, they call them different things.
Titles.
Structure.
Okay, the structure, but there's some place that does not have, there's no, it's just cities. I don't know, just as long as it's not in this area.
Not in the region, not in the region.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Because township government needs to be, there's one state in Union that does not have that, and I don't remember who it is.
And that's gonna be in your request for proposals that we receive, is.
Right.
How far the distribution is and all that stuff.
Right.
Do we just take a look at it on the sixteenth?
Townships don't go west to the Mississippi.
No, I think there's just one state. I don't know.
But everything east of the Mississippi have townships. Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause most, I agree with your timeline, 'cause by the end of November, you wanna have someone hired, because, because you're right, they're gonna have to give at least three months.
Generally, three months. Yeah, the other option that you have, and you know, Lynn and I have talked about this too, is you have a whole bunch of big townships in the state of Michigan. You know, around Lansing, Grand Rapids, Detroit, area, large townships that have very extensive staff structures, that you may have a second or third level person in the, like a, a Delta township or something like that, who's a deputy manager or something along those lines, that's looking to move up, you know, that's already familiar with township government, knows Michigan. You know, you have no idea who you're gonna have in, I mean, this, this place is gonna be popular. I, I'm thinking you're gonna have a sizable candidate pool.
We just wanna see the last half dozen.
Yeah, well, that's it. I mean, you tell them, you tell them, you know, how far you want to cut down.
How well assured are we with what has been planned that it won't creep into the next board?
God, I hope not.
No, I'm, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, I am, I am too.
That's, that's the board decision.
We have to put some date restrictions on it.
It won't be if you don't have it, the details in early enough.
But what we're saying right now is, by the next meeting, we're gonna have a sample RFP.
A draft.
A draft for the board to look at.
Yeah.
And if the board agrees with that wording without any major changes, then we're gonna send it to XYZ. Yeah, you'll have a list with it. You know, there'll be a proposed, proposed distribution list.
Yeah, the mining journal.
So this is all something we're gonna make a decision at on the meeting on the sixteenth.
I would hope so.
What about legal looking at it first?
Well, Roger can look at it, you know, I mean, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be anything, I mean, it's not real complex. It's not a legal document.
No.
I mean, it's just a request for proposals.
Oh, that's what I'm asking, because if you wanna try to do it on Wednesday, does that mean it goes to Roger first? If we don't mean that thing.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, we don't run ads past him unless it's a public hearing ad, just to make sure that we, uh, we meet all the, the, uh, state requirements for public hearings, but this is, you're, you're asking for people to give your proposal and help to fill the positions.
That's all.
It's not a legal document at all. In fact, most places, like the newspapers and that, once you, once you select, once you select whoever your, your provider is going to be, they'll do all the advertising.
Your provider will.
Yeah, they'll do all the advertising.
Will you be telling the people that you'll be soliciting to be our aide in the search? What the date is, that. What the date is, that, the end date that they would have to be through?
Yeah, the RFP will have that.
Okay, what, what you're suggesting now?
Well, it's going to be ultimate after you when you adopt it, but I would say you give them, you know, to complete the process, you want it done by November first or you want it done by whatever, you know, the whole process.
November's not good enough.
No, I mean candidate, candidates and hired by November first. I mean, the process.
I want, I want the candidate hired and in place this year.
Six months before.
Well, I don't know whether, I don't give a damn if, I mean, it all depends on whether you get an extension or.
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
But, but if you, you want to guarantee it with what we know officially now, they'd have to be all done by October thirty first, something. We'd have to have somebody here to get one month or two months with what we know now. You're, until you ask for an extension.
John, I've done that, half a dozen.
No bullshit, you just talk about it.
No, he's already told the board in a public meeting that he's going to ask for an extension.
If you do it in public, John, it's.
If it'll make everybody comfortable, I'll give you the damn letter tomorrow for Christ's sakes, but, you know, I mean, I don't know that you need that.
I don't know what the mental block is here, there's a mental block.
But what we're saying now is, at the next meeting, we'll have a sample RFP.
Yeah.
What we'll have to look at, make a determination if everything's in there to what we want to do.
Right, yeah, that's all.
Along with whatever areas we want to send it to, then it goes out. Within that, they're going to have a due date as to get back their proposals to us. Right, now, my apologies, because you may not have been here, you may have still been out when we had the initial discussion, because when Kirk first came to me and told me that he was going to retire in December, I backed off of my December retirement. I came to the board and said, because Kirk is leaving in December, I'm going to ask you for an extension of my contract through May, so we can get him through his departure and then have time for you to be comfortable with my replacement before I leave.
Well, that helps.
And you may have missed that. And then subsequently, several times, we've had that discussion at the board level before and I've confirmed again that, yes, I'm going to be asking you for an extension. And the board basically said, okay, great. And I've been operating under the belief that that's what you're going to do. Now, if that doesn't mean that come December thirty first, you can't say, oh, by the way, what are you doing come January first, because you're not working here anymore. I mean, you could do that, but, but in any event, that just dawned on me that you may have still been out when I had that discussion with the board. I don't remember. What we're saying is, we've got a few things that are going to happen at the next board meeting. Yeah, at your, at your next board meeting on the sixteenth, you're going to have a draft RFP to consider that will lay out what it is you're asking for from the, from the responders.
Okay.
And when you want that completed, when you want it back.
Their part of it completed.
And what you want that to entail, whether it's the top five, top six or whatever of their candidates, they will be responsible to do the advertising and the screening of the potential candidates and bring you back however many you want to see for consideration for interview and you want that by such and such a date.
Okay, and, and we'll have a timetable and they'll have a timetable.
They'll usually give you a timetable.
Well, then when they respond, when they respond, they'll say, we can meet your time requirement or we need this or, you know, or whatever, I mean, that's what they'll do. And depending on who it is, I suspect you're going to have at least four responses from outside entities, possibly five from outside providers to, to do this. And then you, then you would.
But they all have to meet the same criteria.
They have to meet the same criteria and then what I would suggest is that you as a board, interview them, you know, talk to them either by phone or by whatever to, to verify who it is you're going to select.
Because along with that, also along with the timeframe, they're going to tell you what's going to cost us.
Yeah, I want to know.
And we're going to have to know that.
Oh, absolutely, that's all part of your review process of their proposals.
That'll be in the RFP when they.
It'll be in the RFP and you're going to want to ask them for a list of references, who have they done these projects for, was it or was it not successful, has the person stayed in office all five years?
We can look forward all that for your draft RFP.
That should be in the RFP.
See, because once we get it back from that, now the board's going to have work to do at that, at that point in time.
We have to have another read.
Pardon?
You'll get it Thursday, you gotta be ready for Tuesday. Put your shit together, Ernie.
Anyway, so what, what, what I'll do then is I'll use, I'll use the format the Royal Oak was in because I think that was a pretty good format.
Is there a lot of, I've read their format, as long as it has a timetable added to it for us. I have no argument with the procedures that were used, utilized to get the manager or the department of public works. I think that was, couldn't have been handled any better. So I don't have an argument with it, but I just want to make damn sure that it's this board, this year and early enough that we don't have a problem.
Well, quite frankly, that's why the last time you renewed my contract, it was for one year short of what your term was to give you a year basically to be working with your manager.
Whatever, whatever works out with the board for an extension is fine with me, I don't have a problem with that, I just want to make sure.
Well, see, and another thing is too, is it's done early enough, Randy will, the replacement will be in place, Randy will be retired before political season starts.
That's the whole objective here is to have.
So you won't have any overlap with the political season.
At least three or four months of working with your manager before you get into politics.
Okay, I can afford you six more minutes and then my granddaughter calls.
I think we're done.
That's all we need.
Cool.[1661.28]